Okay, we are ready to start our city council meeting. We appreciate everybody being here. And so, the way we would like to start with a word of prayer. Scott, would you come and give us a word of prayer?
Father in heaven, we're indeed grateful this evening to be gathered here as city council, mayor, residents, and employees of this great city, Spanish Fork. We are grateful, Father, for this wonderful country and state and city in which we live. We're grateful for the blessings which we have to be active participants in our community and the opportunities that it provides us. We're grateful for this wonderful mayor and city council and pray that thy spirit be with them this evening as they make decisions that directly impact not only the city but its residents. We pray that they will have minds that are clear and able to act and make decisions appropriately. Father, we are thankful for our families and ask that thy spirit be with them as we are here this evening. Again, Father, we're grateful for all of our blessings and thank thee for everything that we have and do so in the name of thy son, even Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thanks, Scott. I'd ask Councilman Argyle to lead us in the pledge allegiance.
Please rise. I'm very pleased. Quiet.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to change up our format just a minute, a little bit here. We've got some wonderful people from BYU. Is that right? Yeah, we wouldn't do this for anybody else, but if you're from BYU, we'll let you get moved up into the... So, if you'd like to give our 101 presentation, Chris?
Okay, I'd like to...
You might want to tell them why. Go ahead and tell them why we're moving them up.
So, we have here three seniors from BYU that, for their capstone study, which is a study that seniors in the engineering program do at their senior year, studied the effects of our conservation program that we started last year. And so, with that, with that study, they prepared a really good presentation, but since they are seniors, tonight is the senior banquet at BYU, so they need to hurry and go from here to that senior banquet. That study is about our water conservation program where the city for free will come and professionally install a smart irrigation controller at your home, at a resident's home, that has an app and a Ratcho device that will take care of your sprinklers and allow you to control them from your phone. This, this program is funded with a grant from Central Utah Conservancy District and the state, and then the city also is participating in the cost of this. But the bulk of the cost has been coming from the grant money so far. One of the things about this study, before I turn it over to these students, is that it's getting quite a bit of national attention because of how successful it's been. We've spoken up in Salt Lake, down in St. George, at UT Austin, and we've been asked to speak at UC Irvine now, and then up again in Salt Lake area. And so, there's a lot of national attention on this. The study that the students are going to present, Josie and a professor are actually going to publish over the summer. And then, an organization, a national organization called Water Now is also going to publish something on this program as well. And so, with that, I want to introduce the BYU students, Josie, and Angie, and Whitney, and then Bailey, who also works in our office, has been in charge of a lot of the logistics and organizing how it has run. And so, at the end of their presentation, Bailey's going to get up and tell how people they can sign up and kind of talk about how, what she has done and the team has done to make this work. But apparently, your last name has to end with E to be involved with this, so we'll turn it over to Josie.
We'll share the microphone. Try to talk loud. We appreciate this time that we have to share a project with you. In June, this past 2018, June, they began installing Ratcho irrigation controllers. And this past summer, there was 953 of these controllers installed. As our capstone team, our senior project was analyzing and determining the benefits of these controller installations.
So, one of these benefits, as you can see there, is peak reduction. In order to do this, we gather the hourly average demand for the whole city of three days before the controllers were installed in the month of June and three days after they were installed in the month of August. And we calculated a peak demand reduction of 0.5 percent, as you can see on the red circle on the graph right there. And we did this by calculating the total percentage of the total volume because we know that the water usage is different in June and in August. So, that's how we got that. We believe that a larger reduction will be seen with a suggested schedule and with the installation of more controllers. In the figure to your left, you can see the recommended starting schedule and how this correlates with the curve demand of the city. And the black lines represent the starting time. And we suggested that people irrigate during times where the peak demand is higher. That way, we can reduce the peak demand.
So, these water times that we suggest are during the day, which is a bit different because people are used to watering at night to avoid evaporation from the sun. However, many homes in Spanish Fork are located in areas that have high winds at night, and so it also prevents absorption, and so it is recommended that they do water during the day. And as shown on the table on the right, we have some recommended start times and time spans for them. And for those times that are during the day, it's a larger time span, about five hours, compared to those early morning hours. And hopefully, that provides a time that is flexible for residents and, you know, works with their schedules. And also, by staggering it out based on your address, it's going to also help increase water pressure for residents and also to save water. And, you could switch it. And then, so in order to like study how the water was saved, we looked at the data for about 2,000 homes, the water usage data for 2017 and 2018. And about 540 of these homes had the controllers installed. And if you look at the graphs, you can see that no, so in 2017 and 2018, no controllers were installed for one data set, and then for the other ones, the controllers were installed in 2018. And we found that there was about a 17 percent reduction in water usage for those homes that did have the controllers installed.
So, the 17 percent reduction is each month about a savings of 4,500 gallons of water per household with a controller. This is a financial savings for the consumer of about $3.75, but it really represents a lot of financial savings for the city in the form of increased capacity. For every six homes with a controller, one home can be integrated into Spanish Fork City with no effect on the pressurized irrigation system. These savings amount to delayed investments in new system storage, the reduction in the size of new mains that are to be installed, and a decrease in water rights needed.
I've had the wonderful privilege of being a part of this, really this whole process from just about the very beginning till now. I was able to kind of be like a project manager over this all last year. We have learned a lot, and this year, we're using a great scheduling system that's taken a lot of burden off of man-hours and different things. But one thing I wanted to mention is there really is no downside to this program. It's free for the resident. We've gotten grants from the state, from the Central Utah Water Conservancy District, to be able to fund these, these smart controllers to be placed in these homes. As you can tell, these wonderful ladies have done a lot of research to show that this really is working. And the more that we integrate this into the system, the even better the results we're going to get. We have 3,000 of these controllers. As you've seen in some of the previous slides, about 1,000, about 1,300 have been either installed or are scheduled to be installed. Probably one of the number one questions I get is, are there still controllers left? Most likely, the answer's going to be yes. So, if you're thinking about going up and signing up, just do it. There's plenty of controllers left right now, but there won't be for forever. So, go and, go and sign up right now. So, we have hired four technicians to accomplish this goal as we go and install these throughout the city. And so, one thing I do want to point out is that you do have to have an automatic sprinkler system. You have to have a smartphone, and you have to have Wi-Fi capabilities in your home. Just because of the way that the smart irrigation controller operates, you need to have, you need to be able to have these three things in order to have it run correctly in your home. And so, what we're going to do is I'm actually going to have Scott click on the link here, and I'm going to walk you through. This is SpanishFork.org/ConserveWater. It's a great page full of lots of information. If you have more questions, please go on here. Feel free to look, look at it. There's lots of information on the side here of frequently asked questions, different questions that we've tried to address, any concerns that a resident might have. So, right now, I'm going to show you how to book an appointment. So, we're just going to click right here. And so, it says that we are, the appointments start on May 9th. Right now, we're booked out till about June 11th. So, go ahead and click okay, and click on the smart irrigation install, and click over. And if you click in May, you're not going to find anything because we are booked out. It's going to say, no slots available. So, you are going to have to click over, and clicks down in June till you find a time that works best for you. So, then you go ahead and click on whatever time works best for you, and then you're going to input all this information and confirm, and then you'll get an email that, that will, a confirmation email that will have all the information about your install. We really are so excited about this program. We've, I've seen so many people tell me how much they love it. It's, I love it. This is such a, I love everything about this program. It's really such a great opportunity for the city and the residents to save water, to help our planet, to really make a difference. And I'm really glad that we were able to come and share this with you and to thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Thanks. I think that's awesome. We sure appreciate the study you've done, and, you know, that's really interesting. You know, we tell citizens, hey, this is a great deal, but now we have the data to back it up. That's what's really good about it, that it does really save, and appreciate your work. And you know what? You guys are excused to go because you need to get to that banquet. We don't want to be the cause of that. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You bet.
And I win. I sold my old controller on KSL this week. Rachel was really happy to get rid of that. Sat in the garage for about a year, but...
Did you sell it?
Got 10 bucks. No, it was from Orem.
Proud of you.
Got 10 bucks for it.
You know, you're a wheelie dealer. All right, now, we would like our Miss Spanish Fork royalty to come up. We're excited for our new royalty, and we want them to come up and introduce themselves so the city will know who we are, who you are.
Hello. I am your Miss Spanish Fork 2019, Morgan Reed. My parents are Travis and Rusty Reed, and I am so excited to be able to serve this year and get to know you guys all better. I hope to be of your service this entire year, so anything you need, any little thing, just call me.
Oh, boy.
I'll be more than willing to help. And I mean that when I say it. I might regret saying it, but I mean it.
Sounds like Brandon will have a yard sale you can help with.
A few more things I need to list on KSL.
Hey, I can do that.
Okay.
What's your commission?
Morgan, you are so good.
Charge him.
Oh, I'll, I'll charge Brandon, but...
We'll put you to work Saturday.
Anybody else, anybody else, it's free.
There you go. You're learning already. You've done well. That was your first test, so you've done well.
I would like to introduce my lovely attendants. I'll let them introduce themselves.
Well, I'm Jill McConnell. I feel like I'm pretty well acquainted with all of you. I like to think that I hold the city record for how many times I've been first attendant. So, I feel like nobody else can beat me on that one.
Jill, you're making some good scholarship money.
Yes. The city's paying for my education, so thank you for that. Thank you for paying for my college.
You're earning it, so you're doing very good.
It's been fun, though, but in all seriousness, I love serving in, in all the various capacities I get to do so. I love serving Spanish Fork, and I'm excited for the progress that we're making and what I get to be a part of coming up, so it's been fun.
Awesome. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ashlyn. My parents are Ryan and Chelsea Crockett, and I'm second attendant, and I am very excited to serve with all of you and these two. I love these two with my whole heart. And I was so proud of Morgan and Jill when they won, and I was proud of myself, too. But I'm super excited for this year and what it holds, so, yeah.
We're excited to have you represent Spanish Fork and get ready to attend a lot of events, so you guys will do well, and we appreciate all the time and effort you took to get in, to be in this royalty, and all the fun things you get to do now that you're in there.
I'm excited. I'm excited for the garage sale.
There you go. That's awesome. So, and these girls did a wonderful job when they were trying out. It was a pleasure to be there and to listen to all your talents and questions and all that fun stuff that's easy cake for all of you as nobody's able to...
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
For supporting us and letting us be here and letting us introduce ourselves to you guys. Yes.
Great. Thank you both so much.
Thanks, girls.
Okay, let's move to public comments. If there's anyone in the public that would like to come up and address the mayor of the council, you feel free to come on up. If not, we'll go to council comments. Let's go. Councilman Gordon.
Thank you, Mayor. Last couple weeks been very busy and in a good way. Last week, we were able to spend a few, few hours with one of our businesses in town, General Atomix. They make parts for drone planes, and these are the planes that are flown from the ground. I'm looking at these scouts because this stuff was really cool. And this, parts of these wings are being built here in Spanish Fork, and they are looking for help. They're looking for anybody 18 and older. They even said seniors in high school that, that would even want to come down after high school and, and work. But it's great to see that we've got great career jobs here in town and, and that we are part of building, building $15 million planes is, is really neat. And so, that was a great tour and appreciated our, our city planning group putting that together and, and being able to be part of that. I'd share pictures, but you're not, you're not able to take pictures there, obviously, which was kind of, kind of nice to check in your phone for a few hours and, and be disconnected, wasn't it? This Thursday, we will interview four groups, general contractors that are hoping to become the general contractors to build our new fire station on Canyon Road. And so, I believe Mayor and Stacy will be a part of that. And so, we will, we will vet the four that we have proposals from to see which one we think will do the best job at building our new fire station here in town. So, that's very exciting. Next week, we're going to the League of Cities and Towns down in St. George, and we'll have plenty to report on our meetings as we rub shoulders with our fellow elected officials and, and city municipal management down, down in St. George. This Saturday, some of the chamber events going on is the Easter egg hunt, so we will see our royalty there. And if you've never been to our Easter egg hunt, it starts at 9:00 AM sharp and is over by about 9:01. And that's no kidding. I'm looking at the scouts again because there's chances to win bikes and fun prizes. So, this Saturday down at the sports park, does everyone know where that's at? Down behind the wiggy wash in the dugout, right? So, we hope to see a lot of people there. I'm sure we won't go without seeing a lot of people there. The Chamber Rotary Golf Tournament, Chamber helps out a lot with that. That's Wednesday, May 8th, so any businesses that, or any people that wanted to have a team put together for that, have that on your calendar. And this Thursday at noon, we will be cutting a ribbon for a new business, member of the Chamber, Hometown Chiropractic. And, and then to report on the garbage, Mayor had a wonderful Household Hazardous Waste Event last Saturday. We do those combined with all the cities in the county. It's basically put on over at the Provo Mall. And this last Saturday, the event was a success, so I really appreciated Spanish Fork getting the word out. I got word back from our director of our transfer station that really appreciated that we were, we were one of the cities that was well-attended because of our public information officer, whoever put out the notice. Thank you. I'm guessing that was you, Scott, so thank you. Yesterday had a Nuera meeting. Nuera is the group that we're part of that we manage our landfill with. We're currently building a power station by our landfill. So, we drill down into the garbage, the gas comes out, and we take the green gas and we convert it into electricity. And so, we're under construction for our power plant where we'll convert about four to five megawatts of electricity. I don't know how much that is, Mayor.
A lot.
A lot. I've, I've asked him that question before. But, so we talked a lot about that, and we also talked about getting a request for information. That's an RFI from a group out of Germany that takes garbage, and they make it into pellets and energy from the pellets. And so, hopefully, looking to work with them just to get more information on what they want to do here in Utah to be able to do that. That's a lot for me, wasn't it?
It was.
Are you tired?
You articulated very well.
That's why I've...
Oh, thanks, Stacy. Gosh, I'm going to take the rest of the night off.
That's why I invited Mike.
Okay. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilman Argyle.
I don't have anything at this time, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Beck.
Okay. I have a couple things, too. I believe it was our last city council, maybe two. Dr. Franson came in and talked about the Rotary doing, they're raising funds and where you can sponsor a child for $30. And they're teaming up. You can easily stop by any of your local banks to sponsor a child, or you can Venmo Rotary Club Spanish Fork. But I shared this on my social media accounts, and a couple people text me or responded, messaged me and said, thank you for sharing. I was able to jump on and, and sponsor a child. So, this is a great opportunity to sponsor a child that otherwise wouldn't be able to play, so. And I believe that just goes through the end of April. And, um, let's see, a couple things. With Fiesta Days, we are looking for entertainment in the park for July 24th, so you just hop online and apply there, and then there's going to be a lot of new, not a lot of new sports, but pickleball will be among the other sports that will be, they'll have a tournament. So, if you want to sign up and have a team of, there's pickleball, softball, spike ball, tennis, the speedy Spaniard, all of that is online, and you can sign up now. And then, the library, they will be celebrating their 100th anniversary for Children Book Week, and that'll be April 29th through 5th. If you go to their website, every single day, they have an activity. For example, May 4th, do you guys, what do you think they'll do that day? May the 4th be with you. Yes, and you can go down there, dressed up in your Star Wars, and they'll have some activities and prizes there. And then, other than, I think that's all. Yesterday morning, I was able to spend two class periods up at Diamond Fork Junior High where Scott was able to spend two periods, and Chad, were you there as well? So, that's just a fun opportunity to talk to the seventh graders about local government and, and get their feedback. They really are impressed with our library. Both classes that I was at responded well that they love our library, and so that was, that was good feedback from seventh graders. You kind of wonder if seventh graders really go to the library or read sometimes. So, it was good feedback that they really liked our library. And then, Scott, do you want to put up our pictures? We've been busy with chamber events, like Brandon mentioned. On Friday, Revere had its ribbon cutting, and the mayor was able to address the crowd there, and we all received a tour of their new facility and were able to rub shoulders with some of the new doctors. And Francis Gibson, who is the new administrator over IHC, was there, so that was a good day. And then, what, a day before that, Summit Spa and Flow was recognized as the April Business of the Month. So, it's been a busy week, so good shout-out to the Chamber of Commerce and, and these new businesses and supportive businesses. That's all I've got.
Good. Thank you. Councilman Scobbs.
Mayor, just one thing to report on. The South Utah Valley Animal Shelter, we, they presented their, their budget, their budget proposal. We'll be meeting next month to either adjust or approve that. There are some changes in fees that were discussed, and as we go through, I'm waiting for the soft copy to be able to push to the council, to the mayor and council, so that you can review it if you have any questions. Some of the fees they're looking at haven't been raised in a number of years, and then others are just in-house things for maintenance and other issues. They are looking at, one thing that was discussed was the manager, their needs, was looking to hire some, some full-time, some full-time employees. We had talked and discussed with them and had worked to get part-time easier, a little easier on the, on the payroll, and to see if that would help, help with her needs. That was the biggest takeaway from that. And then, again, the budget, when I get the soft copy, I'll push that out, and we'll be looking to approve that in May. That's all.
Great. Councilman Mendenhall.
Thank you, Mayor. Really quick, thanks for a couple of mentions of the Rotary Club. We have a Rotarian here in our, in our audience today with the scouts. The golf tournament coming up, May 8th, there's still some spots to sign up if your business wants to play in a golf tournament and, and/or donate. It's a great scholarship fund that helps, helps seniors in high school of all the high schools around get into college that apply for that scholarship. So, it'll be a fun day on May 8th, and, and you can sign up. Stacy mentioned the Tykes and Teens, Tykes for Teens or Tykes and Teens Project. We're happy to report today that that is up over about $2,000 or more in donations. And so, the, if, if you're so inclined and want to stop by one of the local banks in town or, or find them online and Venmo, you will help some youngsters that maybe can't afford, for whatever circumstances, to play in, in the recreation offerings that we have. And, and I see a fellow coach in Mr. Fife here that, that everyone knows when you start to talk with those kids that get the opportunity to play together, be part of a team, be part of something bigger themselves, it, it can really help with all aspects of a youngster's life. And so, please, if you, it does go till the end of April, and so, would, if, if you're so inclined to, to help out, that's a good way to do it. I have a couple meetings that I've been to for the Utah County Good Governance Board. You've maybe seen this in the news a little bit. Some local elected officials, some local elected officials, some people from UVU, Rex Facer from BYU, Cameron Martin from UVU are leading it up, and they've got some, some talented college students like we just heard from here that are studying some data to basically see if the county now, as large as we are, as dynamic we are from, think of the point of the mountain Lehigh, all the way down to Santaquin, and the difference in, in our county from, from end to end, and then also what we have coming down the Pike for growth of the county. We are studying the, maybe the... We are studying maybe the best way to be represented for county elected officials and possibly look at changing that. So if you have any recommendations, anything you'd like to pass along, there will be a Facebook page and a website up next week that you can look at, you can provide input, you can email me, text me as well, and we can make sure those get heard. Supposed to meet until a couple more months, and then report back to the county of the findings and maybe a recommendation. My active and healthy Fit City Minute, first things first, I get to do the politician thing and take credit for the great things that are happening with the Fit City movement. Tomorrow, the Utah Healthy Board meets up in Salt Lake and gives away awards, and they are giving an award to the Utah League of Cities and Towns, which selected us to be one of the recipients of that grant. And so I'll be up there with Cameron Deal from the League, accepting an award for the good way that we've tried to highlight physical and mental health of our citizens and try to spend those funds in helping everybody be as healthy as they can. Leads me to my last one. I had the opportunity to sit in on a QPR training last week that was taught over in, and I think maybe you've got some pictures of it, Susan put some pictures up of it. This was over at the Springville Library. There's Taylor Banks, Kim Hall, Susan Chapman, Amber Mendenhall, and Bronco, I guess he was shy that day, Bronco Hunter from the city was there as well. I didn't stay for the whole thing, I had to run home and take care of kids. But I can tell you that the time I spent there, truly life-changing stuff. QPR training, question, persuade, refer. I've said it a few times now, but that's the skill that is taught, much like CPR. When you're trying to just save a life, scouts, you've probably seen CPR, right? Where we pump on somebody's chest and try to get a professional there to help them, keep them alive. QPR is the same kind of training, but it's for mental health instead of physical health. So maybe if somebody's thinking bad thoughts, or has got some mental issues, the QPR training is there to help get them to safety and get them to a professional. So proud of these folks that are taking their time away from their families and teaching this almost on a weekly basis. And if you sat in one of the sessions and heard some of the questions asked, some of the circumstances people are in, some of the help that they need, it would definitely touch a nerve, and you'd know how important these people are, how important the work they're doing. They literally are teaching people how to save lives, and I couldn't be prouder that they're from Spanish Fork doing that all over the valley. And our awards are stakes in the city, in private businesses, and that was held over in Springville. So kudos to them, they are awesome, and again, I get to be a politician, accepting an award for them tomorrow.
There you go, go for it.
Go figure. But thank you, thank you to all that they do. That's all I have, Mayor.
Great. Just a couple things on my end. Last week, I was able to meet with Commissioner Jim Evans, he's the UDOT Regional Representative for our area. We've been discussing a lot about a new interchange between Springville and Spanish Fork. We've been pushing for that for a lot of years. We finally got them to give us a little money to start doing an environmental impact study, and they told us at this meeting that they've committed close to $50 million for that interchange. And so we're excited about that. Like everything else, it's going to take a while, so we probably won't see it until 2023, but we're excited to have it in the works and going. And then, if you want to put up those pictures, my sweet wife and I, our favorite thing to do is walk the trails. This was a professional photographer, that would be me, took some pictures of the trail and the river down there. We love going on there. It's really interesting to see everybody that comes and goes down these trails, from small kids and families to older couples to teenagers. There were people doing their prom pictures down there, taking pictures. The one thing I wanted to mention is, notice the river is very high, and so the caution I want to let everybody know is be very careful with small kids around this river. It might not look like it's going very fast, but if one of those children would fall in, you would have a hard time catching up with them. And so, especially with the runoff we've got going on right now. So be very careful. Whenever we go, we see different animals. If you, scouts, what can you see there? Can you find the animal?
Snake.
No, that's what I like. Yeah, Cheryl, she jumped a little bit. It was a little garden snake, so there along the trail. We saw, actually, we saw two, so it was kind of cool.
Who was faster, you or the snake?
You only have to be faster than the one person you're with.
Okay.
And I won't tell you who's the fastest one on that one. And then we also saw, Cheryl loves to see her hawk, and she's pretty excited when she sees that, so. Enjoy what we have down here. We have some great trails, we've got some great facilities, the pickleball courts were all filled, you know, as we were going by them, and enjoy what we have here in Spanish Fork. We've got some great things. Okay, let's move on to consent items.
Motion to approve the consent items.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Public hearing ordinance 06-19, making amendments to the land use ordinance concerning fences and swimming pools.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a house under construction up on the bench overlooking the river bottoms, and they have a pool in the backyard. And of course, the building code requires a fence around a pool, and most people put the fence up near the front of their house, and they fence in their backyard, and they get some privacy, and then they meet the safety requirements of the code. However, this house up overlooking the river bottoms has a drop, if I can get this to work, right there. And so if you put a fence back even with the house back here, you get neither privacy nor the safety. You could jump over that fence, literally you could trip and fall over the fence there. So they've asked for permission to put a fence on the top of the precipice, to use that word, and that would go right here. That wasn't allowed in our code, so we've looked at it and thought about it. This isn't for every place in town where we prohibit fences in front yards, but if it's large enough, you have some circumstances similar to this, we felt it would be appropriate. So this ordinance addresses that need. And what we're doing is we're spelling out the requirements, where swimming pools can be, the setbacks, as you can see, they have to comply with the accessory structure requirements. I want to draw your attention to the section there that I've had Scott highlight. This was some language drafted elsewhere that went to planning and zoning. When I saw it, I don't like that from a legal perspective. I think we ought not to be building pools in public utility easements, even with the permission of the utilities. That still creates problems. The waivers can be good. Part of the challenge is, if you grant a new franchise agreement subsequent to this, then they don't have the waiver in place. I would recommend from a legal perspective that we delete that phrase that you see there, but that does come to you from the Planning Commission with the recommendation for approval with that language in it. But I didn't have the opportunity to address that with them. Then the next section deals with the fences. We do, we will allow in these situations, if you have a residential lot that has over 200 feet of frontage, has a minimum of 20,000 square feet in area, they may obtain permission from the Community Development Director to locate a solid wall in the front yard, but we're saying it can't be in front of the home, it has to be to the side of the home, have to maintain your clear vision triangles, has to maintain at least a 10-foot setback from the property line, and can't take up more than 50% of the frontage. So with those changes, we feel this is a good ordinance. Again, I point out this one comes to you with a recommendation, as is, I recommend from a legal perspective, we delete that phrase, which won't affect the home in question, but I think it just protects our easements. This is a public hearing, be appropriate to go into public hearing and take comment from the public.
Great. I would recommend that we go into public hearing.
I move we go into public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scobes, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Is there anyone from the public that would like to come up and address on this issue? Thanks, scouts, for being here, we appreciate our scouts. Yeah, and our big scouts.
I'm Curtis Pope, I'm the project manager on the home in question. In the Planning Commission meeting previous to this, the question was brought up, are we catering to a specific single instance, or is this something that will have a general rule that helps multiple homes in the community? And the type of scenario where you're going to run into situations like this, again, will be homes either existing or yet to be built that have a very, very narrow backyard where the majority of the property is to the side on the street frontage. There's one image that was shown in the other meeting, I don't know if we have it as part of these documents, but there are certain situations where, there will be a few homes where the vast majority of their available yardage will be to the side of the home as opposed to behind the home. And that would be the general case that this would be addressing.
Great, thank you. Anyone else would like to address the mayor and council? Seeing none, I'd entertain to go out of closed session.
Some of.
I move we go out of public hearing.
Sorry, public meeting.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any questions? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we approve ordinance 0719, an ordinance authorizing amendments to the construction standards of the city with Junior's recommendation to remove the language.
619, is that?
Did I read the wrong one? 619, excuse me. Making amendments to the land use ordinance concerning fences and swimming pools with the recommendation from Junior to remove the unless-written approach paragraph.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. This will be a roll call vote. Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Passes. All right. Ordinance 0719, authorizing amendments to the construction standards of the city.
Okay, do you have the memo? If you could bring that up. Okay, so we just want to hit the highlights of the construction standards changes, and one of the biggest ones is, a lot of developers have come to us wanting to know what kind of wall that we would like to see in the city, and how it should be painted, and a lot of that is pretty subjective, and it makes it hard for our engineers that are reviewing the plans to say, "Well, I like this, so it's fine," or, you know, "It's not fine," and there's a lot of differences of opinion. So they worked really hard to get a good representation of all the walls that are out there, and then presented those to kind of a steering committee group and Development Review Committee, and came up with some specific styles and paint colors that we want to use universally throughout the city. Enough that there's variety, but enough so that if a wall gets tagged, we have the base coat for that wall on hand, we can run out there and cover it up, and we know what colors that we're dealing with. And then also just some general maintenance of the walls, so we can keep them looking nice and repaint and do some things there. And so that's one of the big changes that we have there. One that was, has been requested by quite a few developers, saying, "This would help us a lot, so we're not trying to guess what you want." Another change is with the hillside engineering. One of the things that, as we get into the review of geotechnical reports on hillsides, we don't have a geotechnical engineer on staff. And so one of the changes that we've made in the last few years is that studies and reports that are submitted that take that level of expertise, we go out and obtain our own geotechnical engineer with that level of expertise to do kind of more peer review and recommend to us different changes that we should ask for in those geotechnical studies. And through that, our geotechnical engineers has asked us to make some changes on, when do we ask for more stability analysis or different reports? Let's keep going. So, one last thing that we've had to do a lot in these standards is, we have an ongoing permit with the state that has to be updated every year. A lot of the updates are because of new regulation, and then a lot of the updates are, as we get in and try to do the work around this regulation, logistically, it's too hard to do certain ways, and so we have to change our report with the state and say, "Well, we have to go about it a different way, or this is more reasonable to require," and we get that approved through the state. So a lot of these changes are to meet those permit changes that come each year. Let's go ahead and... There's a more look at the walls. We talked about that. So, one other change that we're asking for is with excavation permits. In the past, we've asked contractors that are going to go and dig in our streets for a $10,000 bond, and then they submit that to the city, and then we allow them to go, and then that's an insurance that they will perform. One thing that we're realizing is, since these bonds are difficult to really use and collect on, that the contractors have a hard time really being motivated sometimes to go and repair things that need to be repaired and finish up some projects. We have some employees that we've recently hired from some other cities up north that had a system in place where they actually just require a $2,000 cash bond. They, after it's done, they hold $1,000 for, to make sure that it was constructed right, and then they submit that back, and that has worked a lot better in those cities, because it's the contractor's money, and then they get it back. And so rather than going through, what is a lot of work for the contractor anyway, to do the $10,000 bond, this has worked well. So our construction permit office has asked that we try this system, where it's working in some other cities. And then, if you can keep going, that might be all of the major, let's see. This is more of the... So this last part, and I'll just end with this, is, in the past, we had what's called a stormwater design... what's called a, a stormwater design guideline. And basically, it's something that we put together with all the, the rain data and the, the formula coefficients for how we want engineers to design the stormwater system in new developments. And it's been a packet of quite a few standards that we would give to them, and it was adopted as part of our construction standards, but only referred to in the construction standards. And we felt like it would be better to include that whole document in the construction standards and not have, basically, two different standards booked. So, we took that whole design guideline, we inserted it into the construction standards. And so, you only have one document to worry about.
What I like about you.
Chris, I have a question.
Yep.
We recently did some investigation work in the walls, and we deemed that one manufacturer of a wall was not going to be allowed, but there is a picture of their wall in here, and specifically because one of their walls is along our trail, and you can literally punch it with your fist, and it's, it's not a concrete product. Are we allowing them back in, in circumcer- certain circumstances?
No, that's a great question. This, this contractor only made the wall that you referred to, but once we made this change, they now make just full concrete walls, and so that you'll see their pattern again with all concrete walls, so...
So, the picture helps us understand more of the stain pattern that we can use? And, okay, that helps me, thanks.
And, and you can, you'll see that pattern, because they, they now build it with full concrete and not, not the, you know, the, the lightweight wall that they had before, so...
Great.
Which is good, because we have a lot of existing walls with that pattern, so...
You do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, I entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beck, a second by Councilman Mendenhall, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in public hearing, anyone that would like to come talk about these changes? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Scopes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any questions or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move we approve ordinance 719, authorizing amendments to the construction standards of the city.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Argal. This will be a roll call vote. Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scopes.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
That one passes. New business, resolution 19-05, approving an interlocal agreement with Utah County to administer 2019 municipal election.
Thank you, Mayor. So, 2019 is a city election year. So, we'll have an election in November for sure, possibly in August with the primary. And we plan to do the, the vote by mail again. In order to do that, we really need the assistance of the county. And so, this is a, an interlocal agreement that allows the county to really handle that side of the election, they'll get the judges, they'll do those kind of things, they'll print the ballots. We'll be responsible to tally the, they'll, they'll tally the vote on election, I will have to, you know, approve the, the vote by canvas later, that's our responsibility. So, you can see here, I've had Scott pull up Exhibit A, spells out what our responsibilities will be. So, we, you can see, we've got the responsibility to get the filings done, they'll come here to do that, we'll do the notices, we'll take care of all that. And if you go to Exhibit B, Scott, this is what the county will do. I'll go, go back to the second page of Exhibit A, sorry. So, this is the county's responsibility, as you can see, they're gonna, they're gonna do the bulk of the, the work as far as the actual ballots, the, the counting, the judges taking care of the, the polls, and et cetera. And so, we feel this is good. Exhibit B then is the cost, so approximately $32,000 for each election, so if there's no primary, it'd be about $32,000, if there is a primary, it'd be close to $64,000. So, with that, Ken has gone tonight, but would have me remind you of, of the election and the filing candidate dates is the first week in June, and encourage everybody to, to be involved, and particularly to, to make sure you're registered and to vote. We also need to get this sent off to the county shortly, so we, we would like to act on this tonight. The staff, we recommend this be adopted.
Any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move that we approve resolution 1905, approving an interlocal agreement with Utah County to administer the 2019 municipal election.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beck, a second by Councilman Argal, this also will be a roll call vote. Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scopes.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Approves. Ordinance 08-19, amending and clarifying oaths of office.
This is for clarification of what we believe the, the council's intent was a few years back when, when this section of our municipal code was last adopted. But initially, it said all elected, whoa, go back where you were, all elected officials...
I think you're pushing something.
I'm trying to push the red button. All elected officials and appointed officers. We had a situation arise where that drew that into question, is, is that all the employees as appointed officers, or what is that? And we felt the intent was, the appointed is, is appointed by you as the governing body, so we've clarified that by spelling out here, all elected officials and officers appointed by the governing body. So, by state law, the governing body is the mayor and city council, so that would, would clarify the intent, and if, if that does represent your intent, we recommend this be adopted.
Any questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance 08-19, amending and clarifying oaths of office.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilman Gordon, this will be a vote. Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scopes.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
All right, let's, resolution 19-06, authorizing the public works director to exercise, execute water and lease agreements for agricultural users.
We, from time to time, when we have standard form contracts, we have you authorize a department director to execute those, rather than have to bring all of those to you. An example is the, the airport hangars at the airport. It's a standard form, you don't need to see every one of those, as long as you approve the master forms. That's what we're doing here today. As we have grown, we have more and more areas that are agricultural, but are impacted by some surrounding neighborhoods. And both we and the, the farmer have found that it's more efficient and less burdensome to both they and the neighbors if they deliver their water through our pressure irrigation system. So, we've put together a form contract, hopefully you've, you've had the opportunity to look at that in the last few days since you got your agenda. It would be a standard form agreement, we would allow the, the public works director to, to execute when these situations come up. So, basically, you know, we're gonna look at the, where they're at, we're gonna require them to, to lease us one and a half times the amount of water that they anticipate is their need, they'll pay us a delivery charge, but, but they'll, water, they're filled with their water. And this is a one-year agreement that can be renewed each year. And we, and we make it short, because what we found is, these don't go too many years, so usually they sell out, and instead of growing some kind of a, a green cropper growing houses. So, any questions about that?
Okay, if none, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve resolution 19-06, authorizing public works director to execute water lease agreements for agriculture users.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilman Mendenhall, this also is a roll call vote. Councilman Scopes.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Resolution 19-07, amending the type of water to be transferred to the city upon development.
Our engineering department has looked at our, our water policy and recommending another change, this is, is quite minor. Previously, we have accepted strawberry water, and we've identified the irrigation companies that can come from. As we've thought through that, we realized that, that that changes too often, so we thought it better just to indicate that strawberry water is approved by the public works director. And then, we realized they also have some losses, so previously, we've taken it at a one acre foot per share, and we're proposing it be 0.88 acre feet per share, which then takes into account their losses that they have. Second change is, we currently allow, in lieu of providing to us actual water, that they pay the cost of the ULS water that's coming down. So, ULS is Utah Lake System, it's part of the Bonneville Unit of the Central Utah Project. And we have the opportunity to pick up some water there at a cost, and it is a good source of water, it's a constant source, you're allowed to, to bank some of that. But if we can have the developers pay their share of that that we can use, that helps offset our costs for that water, which, though it's very good water, is, is quite expensive compared to other sources. So, we set out a formula, based on that formula, the current amount is, is about $5,000 per acre foot for, for, for the ULS water. So, we're also proposing that that be approved, and the public works director can follow that formula to set that amount each year, so as that goes out, that number actually should go down a little bit, but that's what it calculates out to for now. Questions about this?
Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I move we approve resolution 1907, amending the type of water to be transferred to the city upon development.
Second.
Okay, got a motion by Councilman Scopes, a second by Councilmember Beck, this also is a roll call vote. Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scopes.
Aye.
That passes. Cemetery shop building, design contract and professional service agreement.
Hi.
Mr. Dell.
So, we've gone through the bid process to have the design done for the cemetery shop that we talked about at Midway, Midway. That's a pretty good, I don't know what accent that is, but it was a good one, wasn't it? Australian? Anyway, you guys have read the staff report, but I, this JRCA homer recommending that we go with has, has done multiple projects just like we're asking, they just, the most recent was the Provo Cemetery Shops, Midway, they've done buildings all up and down the state. I appreciate Chris's engineering staff and this new normalizing process, I don't know how many of you are familiar with it, but I, I like the fact that it takes into, there's a point system, and they have us actually, everybody independently, before we meet, go through and rate, study all of these things, and then rate them on a point system, before they even tell us how much the cost is. And, and, and that has, that has seemed to, we found that to be very effective, because now we're taking into other factors, experience and, and their presentation, their professionalism, how many hours that they're going to actually put on the job, which is kind of important. So, we, we're recommending that we award this contract to JRCA Architects. It's $8,165 over what we had originally estimated. If you look at the normalizing project costs, though, they're all fairly even, these guys are pretty impressive with their resume and, and the number of projects that they've done, and the references that we've called on, so we'd like you to, we recommend that you award this contract to them and approve the, the mayor, authorize the mayor to sign that. Any questions?
Have they done any other buildings for us?
Not that I'm aware of. No, this is kind of a first go around for these guys with us.
Any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I move we approve the cemetery shop design bid, be awarded to JRCA Architects.
Second.
Increase the budget.
Yeah, and increase by the 8,000...
165.
165.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Gordon, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Get after it, sounds good. All right, resolution 1908, authorizing condemnation of three billboards on South Main Street.
So, as we all know, UDOT is planning on widening Highway 198 from here to the line at Woodland Hills Drive, or I should say, from the River Bridge where it narrows. Reagan Billboard Company, or actually, I guess it's Reagan Outdoor Advertising, has three billboards, locations that you see identified there. They've asked permission to move those, because they've got to, they got to move them to be out of the, the new right of way for the highway. So, as, as we've looked at it, we anticipate that at some point in the future, that area will be residential, billboards and subdivisions don't mix very well, and so we've proposed under the provision of the state law that, rather than allow them to be moved, that we buy them out, condemn them, if you will. So, we're required to follow condemnation procedures of the state. Part of that is giving them notice, which we have done, and they called, I'd had some earlier conversation, and asked if that meant that we don't want to talk with them anymore, or I assured them that, no, we'd rather sit down and talk with them, work something out that's beneficial to both parties, but because of the parameters of the law, we felt like we needed to, to do this more as a technical matter than, than anything else. So, that's where we're at, we propose that you do adopt it, but they, they do have some representatives here tonight, it is appropriate to give them a few minutes to address the mayor and council.
Right. Come on up and introduce yourself.
My name is Leslie Van Frank, I'm an attorney, I represent Reagan Outdoor in many proceedings like this, it's nice to meet you all, like watching your council meetings. One of the things that, there are a few things that I wanted to run through with you. Your council indicated that this is a technicality. I'm not sure that you guys should think that this is just a technicality. Under state law, if you guys file a condemnation suit against Reagan, and then you decide to change your mind, because you think maybe the cost of it is too much, or you just decide to change your mind, you guys are gonna be on the hook for my fees, and for Mr. Fife's fees, and for the appraiser fees that we're gonna have, and we're gonna have to have at least two appraisers involved in this. So, keep that in mind while you're making this decision. State law says what just compensation to a billboard owner is comprised of, and a lot of people think that, oh, it's just the steel, it's not that big a deal. State law has four components, I'm gonna tell you what the four are, and then I'm gonna go through them with you. State law says, this is, let me just give you the, oh man, of course, I'm not gonna, you know where I am, intent 9A5, thank you, 513, 513, yeah. Just compensation, when you guys pay this, of course, now I have to find it again, I hate small phones, is comprised of, now I'm not finding it at all, now I'm moving a lot slower than your wife was.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I'm not gonna, I mean, I could read it to you, or I could just tell you what it, what they are. State law requires compensation for the, the revenues that the billboards bring in, the, all three of the billboards, and it says, it says revenues less the lease payments that are being made. You got three billboards out there, they're on very, very busy streets, are very, very busy street, the street's only getting busier, it's, the revenues on this are gonna be terrific. We, and I should just let you know, there was a billboard that we had condemned by a smaller city about this same size up north, on a street that was quite a bit less busy than this one, and the cap, it was a cap rate, they take revenues and then they put a cap on it, and as I recall, the cap rate on it was about eight. And I think that the amount that was paid was a million dollars for that billboard. And I think that the amount that was paid was a million dollars for that billboard. You've got three. And that was quite a few years ago. So I can imagine that the cap rate on this billboard is going to be pretty high, or these three billboards is going to be pretty high, or the amount of the revenues. The next thing that you pay for is something called any other right associated with the billboard. What does that mean? State law says we have a right to move. And if you guys don't want to let the billboard company move, then you're taking away that right. Another one of your sister cities up north recently paid $350,000 for the... To get rid of that zoning right, so that the billboard company could not move it. You've got three billboards. You're telling them they can't move. It's $350,000 apiece. I'm not real good at math, but that's over a million dollars. So it's starting to get kind of expensive here. What people generally think of is it's the steel. So you can calculate that the steel of those signs is... It's probably, I don't know, somewhere around depreciated maybe $100,000. So that's not a lot, but, you know, that gets thrown into the pile as well. And, you know, I'm a city that with revenues of what's your budget? It's about $22 million. $100,000 is not a fun thing to throw into the pot. But that's the third component of it. And now, of course, I've forgotten the fourth component. And I am going to have to find it in the ordinance, or the statute, I mean. Or my... Oh, yeah. That's really actually the big one. That's the really big one. What state law says is that you have to pay for damage to the economic unit of which the billboard's owner's interest is a part. What is that? Billboard companies sell their signs on a rotation basis. So they can... They'll get an advertiser who says that, I want to be exposed on... In a certain community or without, you know, in the state on surface roads, and I want to be on these... Or I want to be on the roads for a year. And because Reagan's got surface signs throughout the state, they've got a pretty good surface program happening. And it's easy to sell those. But an economist is going to come in here and is going to say that, well, wait a minute here. You're chipping away... You chip away three. What's the reduction in value to the whole by those three? I think it's going to be a lot bigger than just three signs. So that actually, I think, is going to be more than the cap rate. I mean, you guys are looking at damages here of a lot of money. A lot of money. And I know... I mean, I know you're thinking about the future. You're thinking about billboards down the road and residences down the road. But residences come up near billboards all the time. And if people want to buy into the residences, because they know that the billboards are there. They know that they're there. Reagan's worked with communities before and made them so that they're... They don't shine on... Into people's houses or into people's rooms. Some communities ask them to turn the electronic lights off at night or to turn them... To make them static so that they don't flash at night. Some communities have them actually put electronic billboards in because they're less light polluting than the other kinds of billboards. So, you know, the billboard companies, Reagan in particular, they're good at working with residents to try to make these things be as unobtrusive as possible. And you've got to understand that anybody moving into this community that you hope or you think might be put there someday is... I mean, who knows? Maybe somebody's going to come in there someday and say that, oh, this is a great commercial area. You know, we'd rather put a commercial area in here than a residence in here. You don't know what the future holds here. And you're talking about spending a lot of money on a song and a hope. So, there you go. Any questions?
Any questions?
So I have a comment.
Yes. That's not a question to me.
Because my understanding, the reason we're doing this is because there's a new law that states that we have 180 days to respond. And if we don't respond in that, then you have the right to just go ahead and move them. That's the reason we're doing this, because we've been waiting for Reagan to respond to those things that you just said, and we have not got that.
Well, what we have is... What I understand that has been given to us is an offer to move them with the caveat that they must be removed when residences go in. And cities don't have a right, under state law, to do that. You don't have a right to put those kinds of exactions on them, if you want to call it an exaction. You have a right to get rid of a billboard by gift, purchase, lease, or condemnation. And I understand...
So there's no working that then?
So there's... So...
You just got through telling me there's all kinds of things to work, but you just said, no, we can't do that.
No, what I'm saying is... What I'm saying is that there are ways to make billboards when they are within residential communities or nearby residential communities. You can make them work. You can make them... Not make them go away. Not make them go away. I mean, Reagan's well within its rights to say, no, we don't want the boards to come down in 20 years. I mean, the leases that they've got are potentially for far longer than that. I know that they've got leases there for at least the next, I believe it's 10 years is the last time I... When I just looked at this. And with rights and options to renew. So they've got a right to be there for a very long time, as long as the property owner's willing to continue to allow them to be there. So for them to enter into an agreement with you, which is the agreement that has been offered, that says, well, you're going to take it down when the houses go in, that's not very fair.
Have they come back with anything else, Junior?
Well, at this point, they haven't. But let me add, this is, you know, this is initial stages. We're not going to run out in the next month and file a condemnation action, obviously. And Reagan does have a good reputation for trying to work with cities and communities. So I would anticipate we'd have some discussions.
Okay.
You know, it's accurate. We can't impose that on them. We've offered that as a solution. And, you know, they haven't countered yet, but I anticipate that they'll talk with us in good faith.
Okay.
My only comment would be that you said we don't know what that area will be, and we do know. We have a great master plan that tells us as we grow as a city. And so I wouldn't say I took offense to that. But we do plan for our future, and we do know what we want.
And I know master plans change, you know?
They definitely do. So my one question to you was, I drove by and noticed the signs were down.
Yes, that's per agreement with UDOT.
Understood. Okay.
So that they could actually do their expansion at this point?
Okay. Understood.
Any other questions?
The... Well, I guess not a question, just in looking at facts and figures, there's a recent study that said that homes within 500 feet of billboards are generally $30,000 less in property value at the point of sale. So people do know that they're moving in next to a billboard, but I would wager at the cost of savings that they do it. I don't know that they necessarily say, oh, yes, it's there, and it doesn't bother me. Now, that's presumption on my part. But if I want to move to a particular neighborhood, and price point is the issue, $30,000 on a home is significant as far as a reduction in sales. So I don't know that I would... I don't see that really as a tipping point that people... That the billboards are not that big of a deal because people move next to them. I would say they do it because of price, more than anything. I... And I don't mean that besmirching the fact that they're there. I just... And this isn't the form. It just seems with state law that there have been some very influential lobbyists that have been able to enact these laws, it seems to me, because I don't see where citizens and cities actually gain. But the billboards have an awful lot to gain from these.
Oh, I think if cities had their way, then billboards... There would be no billboards at all. But there are... You know, the reason these laws get passed is that their... Billboards are treated very badly by cities. And they are business owners like anybody else is. And they create revenue for the state. And, you know, they're good partners in all kinds of things. Billboards can... I mean, if you think about it, billboards are... I'm going to not sell you on billboards here today, but I can tell you that legislators understand the importance of the billboard industry and their right to be able to continue in business. And that's why the laws get changed, because cities do their very darnedest to bend over... Bend the laws that we've been able to get into place and try to get rid of them, and try to get rid of them. And, you know, to the point where, you know, we got a city out there paying property owners to not renew leases and paying $350,000 for... To get rid of the right to relocate. You know, I mean, so some cities, maybe bigger budgets than, you know, most cities. There are a lot of cities that don't like them. But that... The legislature responds to business owners, and that's what we've got here. You've got a responsible business owner who's in your community, who will put up... Oh, gosh. What are those called? The... Not Megan's Law, but the ones when the kids get kidnapped, you know? I mean, they put those signs... Thank you. Thank you. And Amber Alerts. You know, they put up Amber Alerts. They put up warnings about... Gosh, you know, remember that bridge in Minnesota that failed? And cars started coming over? Well, the billboard companies went into effect and within 30 seconds of hearing about it, they changed all the billboards and said, don't go here. And they saved countless lives because of electronic billboards that they had up. These are not electronic that you're talking about, but you might consider putting them in at some point. You know, that's not why we're here today. But I'm just saying that that's the reason that the legislature has done this for...
Sure. And I completely agree that there are many great public service announcements and things that they do. At the same time, as you mentioned, master plans do change. Billboard companies are businesses, just as any other. And as master plans change, businesses can be bought out. Businesses can run aground. And master plans can change, and a business is no longer in a particular location. It's just set up that it's very, very expensive and near impossible for this particular business to be moved because of master planning or be bought out or changed.
But you can move them because of master planning. So what you do is you create a place for them. You can create places for them. And people... I mean, cities do that all the time. And when you talk about cities going... Or businesses going under, we're not talking about a business that's going under. You're talking about a very profitable, very good business that it's only because cities pass these laws, and citizens say, well, we hate them. And it's a knee-jerk reaction to... I didn't particularly like them when I first got started in this business. But, you know, they serve a huge function. They really do. You know, where are you going to advertise? I don't know if you're up for election. Who's up for election this year, you know? Are you going to put an ad up on one of the billboards? And who's going to see that? Who's going to see those billboards is your voters. Those are the people that you're going to get to see. And short of going out there and dropping a leaflet on every single doorstep in your district, that's the best way to get them. So, I mean, they perform a vital function. They really do, even though people hate them. And so cities, because their citizens hate them, cities decide they want to get rid of them, perfectly functioning viable businesses. And, you know, in order to survive, the industries had to go to the legislature to make these changes. I'm sorry. I feel like now I'm trying to convince...
You're fine, thank you.
I think we got your point.
Okay.
Stay here, if you would. I really appreciate... This has been very insightful for me. I was in a meeting here in the DRC a couple of weeks ago with a roomful of billboard companies, and I asked for some explanations from probably seven or eight different billboard company representatives to explain to me, how do you calculate what the value of a billboard is? And I think... Well, I got no answer, and I got some kind of snarky responses from some. So I really appreciate what you've described today, because that's been very insightful. Let's try... What I'd like to do, though, is maybe focus our discussion on the three billboards that we're talking about, not the collective system. Because as I... As we've been paying attention to these billboards for the last couple of years, one of the reasons why we proposed the solution that we did is because the specific billboards in question often have very outdated signs on them. And so we know that they're not advertising something current because it's, you know, advertising something for Thanksgiving, and it's April, or it's advertising, you know, like I said, something that's outdated. And so... And these are a smaller billboard... Well, I'll talk about that in a second. So talking about the macro scale, how does that fit into what you described a moment ago, where you take into consideration the totality of the Reagan system, if you will, right? I can't remember the word you used, but you described that they were on rotation?
Yeah. Or... It's basically a severance damage.
No, no, no. Sorry. How you described that it's not this billboard, but it's how it fits into the rotation of things. But getting back maybe to these specific billboards, how... It seems to me, as I look at them, that that doesn't apply because they are not being used. Yeah. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Mr. Reagan. Tell us your name. My name is Dewey Reagan. I'm the president and general manager of Reagan Outdoor Advertising. Just to follow up, and I appreciate Leslie coming and speaking this evening. And it's difficult to get up in front of groups and speak. It's something that gives me great trepidation every time I do it.
We have that same problem.
The couple things here. The first off, the comment... And I was not one of the ones that got up and made a snarky comment in that meeting. So let me start there. But so one of the things we've been concerned about, about the three billboards in question, when we applied to relocate and we received the first letter that the city wanted to take a look at condemning them, was coming back and seeing if there could be a way to solve the problem without the city expending taxpayer dollars to condemn them and Reagan spending the money to have to hire attorneys and appraisers to figure out what they were worth. And so we went down that road. This was in the late fall, winter, and made some proposals. And one of the ways that a situation like this can also... That wasn't mentioned, and it's tough because you're just trying to summarize the state law, that a situation like this can be solved is through agreement. And one thing that can be looked at is... And Reagan had mentioned this, but it hadn't been fleshed out. It has not been fleshed out to this point in time. Is looking at someplace else in the city that both parties could agree to place the signs. And we had talked about that generally, but not in depth. There's not been energy focused there. So that's one thing. Then with regard to the severance damage, those particular signs are not sold singularly. They are sold in groups, what we call showings. And a showing is equal to the percentage of the population that any given advertiser is trying to reach on a daily basis during a 28-day period of time. So let's say... Maggill bees may come to Reagan and say, we would like to reach 25% of the total population of Utah County on any given day for... Sorry. Not any given day, every day for a 28-day period of time. And so we'll calculate what that is and how many cars need to pass a certain number of signs in order to do that. So once that's determined, if you lose some signs that are being sold in a group, you no longer are able to provide that total number of views, for lack of a better way to put it. And that affects your ability to sell the product in a group. And so that's how severance damage comes into effect. And then lastly, with regards to the... Where we are on it is certainly we would like to work... I just want to reiterate, we'd like to work something out with the city where, you know, we can look at signs potentially being relocated, if we can come to an agreement on where, and neither side having to expend a lot of time or energy on this matter. And so I'll conclude with that, unless there's questions for me.
That helps me.
That does help.
That helps me. Thanks, Dewey. Can I ask a question maybe of Junior or Seth? What is, if we didn't take action tonight and say we tabled it, this to, our next meeting would be in first part of May, give us time to think about it or help us understand that?
So the advice we got from some billboard expert counsel that we contacted was we probably needed to take some action within the 180 days that Chad referred to earlier. You know, if they're willing to indicate their willingness to waive that for a short period of time to talk. I, you know, as I indicated earlier, they have a reputation for working with cities, for being innovative. I think our opportunity to work something out is pretty good. Doesn't mean we will, but I think they'll meet with us and negotiate in good faith. And, you know, I think we have an opportunity to resolve the matter. As Mr. Reagan indicated, he hopes we can resolve it without either he or they, we or they incurring a lot of expense. And we hope that to be the case as well. So I don't mind, but that was why we felt the pressure. As we consulted with our consultants, they advised that we ought to do something by the 180 days, and that's coming up before our next meeting.
I think it's important that there was a reference earlier to a snarky comment by someone else being made, and it wasn't you. And I appreciated that, and I appreciated them, their candor here. And we even heard Mr. Reagan say that he was willing to work with us.
And I think from our point of view, we don't want to, with the direction that we've been given, we don't want to lose the ability to do whatever it is we decide is the right decision or the right course. Whatever we decide, you decide we should do. I think from the counsel we've received from Mr. Baker is that if we don't follow the notice requirement and the order that's before you tonight, then with time, we could lose the ability to do, you know, this option, if it's the option to condemn and that's what you choose to do. At this point, we haven't been told we don't, that we want to lose that option. So as I understand it, and I'll certainly take some correction from their legal team as well, that by passing the resolution tonight, we don't start the condemnation process. We just enable that process. And that process doesn't start automatically and some of the issues that were brought up don't necessarily start automatically. But you also don't lose the ability to do that. And at some point in the near future, if we decide through discussions that we want to stop going down that road, we want to go down a different road, then we have the option to do that. And if we decide we want to go down the condemnation road, we still also have the option to do that. That's how I've understood it. Is that how I was from you? And please, again, if I'm misunderstanding, they can certainly.
I have a question then, because Leslie mentioned that we would incur our attorney fees and all of that if we move forward. Okay. So it sounds like, I got it.
Leslie's fees are one thing, but I know Morgan Fife's are ridiculous.
Yeah, he's on this. He's on that. You've seen his coaching.
Have you made it a matter of record now?
Morgan's a good guy. He's a good coach, too.
I think like with anything else, you know, if we can get boots under the table, we can all come up with a solution and it works for everyone. And I hope that that's what we can do, and that's what we want to do. If I heard that right from you, Mr. Reagan, that's what you want to do. I mean, we're here protecting our legal rights, but by no means that means we're going to pursue that. But we would still love to sit down and negotiate and work something out. That's the best way. If we don't have to involve all those high-dollar attorneys and other fees. Oh, excuse me. Well, I know, you sure scared the heck out of me when you come up here. You told me you must be one of the high, high-dollar ones. And so that's what we'd like to do. And so by passing this, I would hope that you would still understand that we're still wanting to work with you and come to a solution. Because I think you want to be successful, we want to be successful as a city and do what's best for our residents. And I think together we can work. And we've had a great relationship with you, and I don't want to see us change that. Yes, we do. Yeah, we use them. So, you know, when you say the cities, don't, please don't put us in that category, you know? You know, when you categorize cities, we're not all bad. You know, we're not all trying to get rid of you. So.
With that, can I make a motion to table? Or do I need to do anything?
I thought we were authorizing that.
I thought we were going to do it, and then, is that, what do you want us? Pass it, because it doesn't mean we file it.
But there would have to be an agreement to waive the 180-day.
I don't want to give you legal advice as to whether it's sufficient under the statute or not, so.
Sorry, you'll have to come to the microphone. And I guess, I guess for me, I would say I would rather table the motion and send a message that we can work together. That's my two cents.
So what I was going to say is I don't want to give legal advice as to what would happen under the statute, under those circumstances. My client says that he is willing to extend it by 30 days. So the 180 days goes to, what's 180 plus 30? Thank you.
Well, if he's willing to, he's a man of his word, and I'll take that from him. And so we'll table this. How's that?
That's what I was prone to do.
I appreciate that.
So do we need an action to do anything? We just move on?
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you for this discussion, and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay. Modifying, modification to project approving for the Reese Apartments.
Well, that's loading, Dave.
Do you need a drum roll, or what do you need here, Dave?
Give us a rundown on the Yankee season so far, or comeback win by the Clippers last night? Where we're all in bed for.
It was a late night, right? 10:30?
My son got a 21 on the ACT, which is like 10 better than me.
I almost called it a night. 10:30.
It's up.
Stacy's down there like, oh no.
Okay, we're ready.
Great golf weekend, right?
Great golf weekend.
Good night in the Bronx. But anyway. Everybody's really familiar with this project. At this point, frankly, this is more of an FYI than anything. And if I need to take some heat from the council for that, I will. I think everybody had a chance to get to know the owner and the developer of the property here. A couple of years ago, she went through the approval process. I believe her interest in doing a great development here is very genuine. I think she's committed to the community and to the neighborhood and to this particular development. So when I first got an email from her that had kind of a panicked tone just about two weeks ago relative to how she had put the brakes on construction because she just didn't feel good about a particular part of the design and how she wanted to work with the city to get that changed. And as she expressed how much it had cost her to put things on hold and how anxious she was to get to work with her engineering folks to make some changes, I was pretty prone to try to accelerate the process of getting her on the path that she wanted to get on. So in short, we did a little, a bit of legwork here a couple of weeks ago with some of the planning commissioners that were involved in the original approval of the project. And I spoke with the planning commission last week simply about the concept of allowing Mrs. Christiansen to move forward with what you see above, which is the modified or proposed design as opposed to what was approved, which is what's shown underneath. And it's, there was, there's one actually incorrect representation on the, what's shown as the approved elevation there that I can touch on in a second. But to make a long story short, some of the comments that I heard as we spoke with the planning commission and Bruce Fowler, who was the chairman of the planning commission as we developed a zone to permit this project and as it was approved, the feedback that we got was very positive relative to the proposed design being much more unique, being something of a tribute to the original design of the Reese Elementary Building. I'd point out a couple of things relative to the proposed elevation. You could see perhaps kind of midway through the building. And incidentally, this is the elevation that you would see from Fourth North. So the south-facing elevation where Mrs. Christiansen salvaged some of the tiles from the original building that she wants to use in the structure. So those are the things that you see on the parapet near the top side of the building there, kind of right in the middle. A Reese Apartment sign with gooseneck lighting at the corner, with the flat roof that's, again, just more consistent with what was there before and different things like that. So that all being said, she's working towards getting plans prepared to be able to proceed forward with what's shown on the proposed elevation there. And I hope that's okay with you guys at this point. And I'd note maybe just one other thing. If you've been by the building in the last few weeks, you might notice that the tresses, for example, are up on the corner. There's an investment that has been made in the project that she's walking away from in order to make these changes. And again, I think that's, I don't see anything about anything else that she's doing as well that suggests that this is about cutting corners or cutting costs or anything like that at all. And I really, really, I wish that we worked with more folks that cared about projects like she does. And for whatever role I play in this, I'm really willing and happy to take a backseat to her desire to do it the way that she feels is right. And that's where we're at.
So is this in the Bronx?
It's not in the Bronx.
Pretty close.
We'll look up at the top there on the left.
Actually know how that happened.
I don't know.
It's an easy fix, but.
Okay, I just checking. I don't know where that place is, so.
I think that's donuts. Just saying.
I'll get them from the guy that put it together, that's for sure.
Yeah, you will, Brandon.
So, little worried about this tree because of the coming up on Second East. If that tree's out front, this right here to see down is going to affect that, being able to enter that street if that is, tree is forward, which I bet.
It's close to the corner, right?
Right on the corner. Because it already is short. It's even with the stop sign, the building.
Yep. We would not permit a tree between the building, the building corner and the street on either side, just given our site triangle requirements. So that, and incidentally.
Just, it's just there for now, so.
This is, in each case, an artist's representation of what the engineers and architects are trying to execute. So there may be some minor tweaks from this, which are pretty customary. But this is what, in fact, I spoke with Karen at about 5:15 tonight, just to, you're still going in this direction? Any updates for the council? She said no. That is what the architect's putting together, so.
Any other comments, questions?
Well, just again, Karen's fulfilling a need in our community with this project. But also I've noticed the, I mean, the economic benefit of when you have development going on in your community. There's a lot of those trucks that are framing this and building this, that are driving around town, eating lunch, getting gas, doing their thing. So it's been a busy.
Busy time. All right. If there's no other questions, I would entertain a motion.
Like the front of the door from the Reese School.
Exactly. Yeah, that's not an accident. Yeah.
I move, we approve the modification to project, the Reese Apartments project.
A motion by Councilman Menon Hall, a second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving down to my oral proclamation concerning Arbor Day. I have a proclamation I would like to read. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture, the special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, an Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas in 2019 is 147th annual anniversary of the, and whereas trees can reduce erosion and perilous topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperatures, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property value, enhance the economy vitality of our business area and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas Spanish Fork City has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting practices, now therefore I, Steve Leifson, Mayor of the City of Spanish Fork, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 26, 2019, as Arbor Day in the City of Spanish Fork and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees, woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of this future generation. It's a lot of whereas. I know. Thank you. Do we have to make a motion on this, or is that, okay. Good there. Let it be written, let it be law.
Then I move we go into closed session for land transaction.
A motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.